Hello, I'm Michael Popa, Executive Director of Mainstream Coalition, and thank you for joining the final Johnson County Primary Candidate Forum, co-sponsored by the Legal Women Voters of Johnson County, ACLU of Kansas, Advocacy and Awareness Group of Johnson County, Mid-America LGBT Chamber of Commerce, and Mainstream Coalition. Tonight, we will hear from 12 of the 13 candidates running for Overland Park City Council. Please note that all 13 candidates on the August ballot were invited to participate. Tonight's forum will be in two parts. From 6:30 to 7:30, we'll hear from candidates running for Words 1 and 2. Then, from 7:30 to 8:30, we'll hear from the candidates running for Words 4 and 5. Before we begin, I'll go over just a few housekeeping items. We are offering closed caption services for those of you joining us on Zoom this evening. It's a third-party service. If you don't see it, click CC at the bottom of your screen. And if time permits, at the end, we will take questions from the audience. So please use the Q&amp;A feature. Again, that icon should be at the bottom of your screen as well. If you're on a mobile device, you may have to swipe or click the More button to see those options. A link to the forum guidelines will be placed into chat, but I will just go over a few of the highlights. Each question will be asked to all candidates. Candidates will then have 2 minutes each to answer the question. Time permitting, then, each candidate will also have 1 minute at the end for closing remarks. Remaining time for each candidate will be tracked in the chat box. So please pay attention to that. The partner organizations sponsoring this forum believe that democracy works best when citizens are informed and active. Thank you for taking the time to learn about the candidates currently running and the important issues surrounding these races. Now, I'd like to welcome our moderator this evening, Mr. Leon Harden with the Mid-America LGBT Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you to Mainstream Coalition for allowing us to sponsor this event today. I'm Leon Harden. I am the Policy Chair for the Mid-America LGBT Chamber. In my day job, I lead Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion for Burns &amp; McDonald, and I'm very excited tonight to be your host and moderator as we walk through some of the questions with the candidates. So I think we will go ahead and get started with the first question, which is, tell us about your connections to the Overland Park community and how that relates to city policy? And I think we'll start with Michael Sirnuski. I knew I was gonna mess that up, from Ward 1.
Thank you to Mainstream and League and everyone involved with this. My name is Mike Sharonewski. I'm a lifelong resident of Overland Park in Ward 1. I went to school here, Shawnee Mission West, Johnson County Community College, UMKC. I've worked here all my life for various small companies and everything. And I'm running primarily because I feel that the current State Council has done a not-so-good job of listening to the demands of its citizens, often favoring developers. Everything, and that's a primary reason I'm looking to run is that what I feel is a lack of leadership and lack of citizens being listened to. I hope that answers your question satisfactorily, but yeah.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that. Next, we'll move to Logan Healy from Ward 1. The same question, which is, tell us about your connections to the Overland Park community and how it relates to city policy.
Thank you to the Mainstream Coalition and all the sponsoring organizations today. My name is Logan Healy. I've been serving on the Overland Park City Council since being elected initially in 2017. I grew up in Overland Park. Recently became a first-time homebuyer in Overland Park, just south of downtown. I went to Shawnee Mission Schools, East Antioch Elementary, Antioch Middle School, which is now the Administration Building, and then Shawnee Mission East High School, which is one of the three high schools that cover Ward 1 of Overland Park. I have been involved in our community for quite some time, depending on my age and life. But most recently, obviously, Overland Park City Council. I served on the Advisory Board of Climate Action KC and the Board of the Metropolitan Energy Center. I was on the Board of Trustees for the Shawnee Mission UU Church, the Alumni Network Advisory Board for Youth Volunteer Corps, and I'm a Johnson County Citizens Academy graduate. I'm also a Community Engagement Manager for the past four years at Harvester's, the Community Food Network, which covers a 26-county region around Kansas City and certainly has quite a presence in Overland Park. A lot of people don't realize that food insecurity is unfortunately alive and well, even in Overland Park, Kansas. But I am currently pursuing a Master of the Public Administration degree from the University of Kansas. I got my undergraduate at University of Southern California. But in Overland Park, I've been proud to be the Vice Chair of the Public Works Committee. I've been involved with our Environmental Advisory Council for the city. I've served on the city's Advisory Council on Parks Recreation and currently as the Council Representative for the Legacy of Greenery Committee. I'm glad to be here today, and I look forward to the rest of the questions.
Thank you, Logan. Next up, we have Carol Merritt from Ward 1. Same question. Tell us about your connections to the Overland Park community and how that relates to city policy. Carol, I think you may be on mute.
There, am I unmuted?
You're good.
Okay. Hello, everybody. My name is Carol Merritt. I am running for a city council in Ward 1. I have lived in Overland Park since the year 2000. I have been an active real estate agent and retiree here in Overland Park. I have been finding homes for people who had no chance of finding a home. And so I've been available and very intensely, deeply organized with the homes in Overland Park. I have found a way to find people homes with no money down. It took a long time for me to find that. The last person I got a free down payment, walked into a home with no money, and came out with $500. Many people have done that. These are poor people who didn't have a chance of getting a home. And I am thrilled beyond words to see them out of an apartment that is putting money into a landlord's pocket and putting it into their pocket. I make sure that each house is the right price, in the right location, and in the right condition. And I make sure that they're happy, and I have done this many, many times. I work with two lenders who provide grants from the state of Kansas and Missouri to do this. So I'm actively involved in getting people out of apartment buildings where they don't make any money, and they're putting it in a safe account in their own bank account. And appreciation is great in Johnson County. I recently looked and see that my own home has appreciated $20,000 because I know where to buy.
Thank you, Carol. I really, thank you, Carol. That's time for that answer. And we'll keep moving to Melissa Chatham. Is that correct, your last name? Or I'm sorry, Ryan Spencer. I apologize. We'll give that a beat.
Thanks, Leon. I was like, that was the other four points. Hello, everybody. My name is Ryan Spencer. I'm actually running for city council for Ward 1 as well. My connection to Overland Park, I'm a lifelong Johnson County resident in and out of Overland Park, depending on the times I was at school for the past 30 years. And went to Shawnee Mission South, K-State, and then went to grad school at Northern Arizona University. Ended up coming back home to Overland Park back in 2012 now. So it's only been about eight years. And I live just east of downtown Overland Park, right there off 80th and Metcalf. I have a wife and two small children at home. They're not here. That's why it's so quiet in the background. But I appreciate, oh, yeah, there you go. I appreciate that. Sorry, Melissa got me off track there. I've been working in different hotels for the past 15, 20 years in various regions regarding finance accounts receivable, accounts payable, as well as administration and finance and management as well as possible for those fields. Right now, I'm currently actually doing payroll for an internet security firm out in south of Overland Park, at the old Sprint campus. Now it's called T-Mobile Campus, or whatever they're calling it nowadays. But I'm in politics in K-State, and I've always wanted to get involved on a much higher level than I do online, just being an internet warrior. So I'm really excited to be running. I'm really excited to be talking to you all. Appreciate you hosting this event and looking forward to the questions tonight. So thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. And Melissa, I'm so sorry for the false start there, but we'll keep moving. So Melissa Chatham from Ward 2.
Close. It's Cheatham, like the old Dewey, Cheatham and Howe law firm joke.
Great, thank you.
And I owe Ryan an apology because I sent him a direct message to say, go lumberjacks because I am from Arizona originally. Anyway, I will answer your question and say I'm running for city council here in Ward 2. And my connection to Overland Park is that Overland Park is where my husband was raised, and he always knew this was where he wanted to come back and raise our family. And when I got to know Overland Park, I was a quick convert. This offered us a great place. Just like all the awards say, it's one of the best places in the country to raise a family. We were able to buy an affordable home here. We have great schools, great parks, great amenities, great employers. And that's why we chose to live in Overland Park. So my top priority, if elected to the city council, is to keep the city working well. When I knock on doors, that's really the number-one comment that I hear from people is they're happy here, and they don't want anyone to do anything that messes it up. So keeping things working when it snows, the streets get plowed. When I take my kids to the park, there's toilet paper. If you see a dog running around, someone will answer the phone at City Hall, and that's not true in every city. My other priority is to make our decisions with an eye towards the future so that my children will make the same decision my husband did, to settle down here in Overland Park. So when we're making decisions, I want us to make sure that we're thinking about what kind of jobs, what housing, what amenities are they going to be looking for when they settle? Because we've got to start making those investments and doing that planning now. I appreciate the questions. Other ways I've been involved in Overland Park is I've been on my Homes Association Committee. I've served on the PTA as the Legislative Chair at my children's school, and I'm a member of the city's Volunteer Environmental Advisory Council. I hope I'll have a chance to talk more about some of the problems that I've solved in those organizations, and I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, Melissa. All right, so last candidate here is Tony Medina from Ward 2. Tell us about your connections to the Overland Park community and how it relates to city policy.
Thank you, Leon. So yes, I'm Tony Medina, a candidate in Ward 2. And my connection to the Overland Park community, so I guess my deepest connection really starts as being a resident of the Ranchview neighborhood. And my connectivity to my neighbors and the rest of Ward 2 and the city council really began about this time last year when we created an opposition to the Ranchmark South apartment development proposal. And from that point is how I became involved and how I become very connected to the residents of Overland Park, and not just in my neighborhood. It was very eye-opening going through that process, and I learned a lot about my neighbors, about myself, but about our community as a whole. And since then, I have listened to many different people throughout that process and other issues that have come up, that people on both sides, whether they're in favor of an issue or they oppose an issue. I've heard many different opinions, and that's how I'm directly related to Overland Park community as I've lived here the last 11 years. But it's really my third trip around the Kansas City area region. I've lived here two previous times, but this time, we decided to choose Overland Park as our home base. Beyond that, community involvement that includes Overland Park but also ranges wider is my involvement with the Friends of Johnson County Mental Health Center, where I serve on the Board of Directors. And then also with the Johnson County Suicide Prevention Coalition, where I am a member of the leadership team in the fight to increase suicide awareness and prevention throughout Johnson County. And then, on a much larger basis, I am a founding board member of the Kansas City Pride Community Alliance. And we're a new organization that has the responsibility of producing this year's Kansas City Pride events. And although we call it Kansas City Pride, everyone knows that includes a much larger part of the region on both sides.
And Tony, thank you, Tony. That's time for that answer, yep. So we'll move into the second question, which is, and we'll start with Mike. The city of Kansas City currently has a Human Rights, as well as a newly-created LGBTQ Commission. As councilperson, would you support the creation of either in the city of Overland Park?
So this may be the shortest, one of the shortest answers you might encounter on tonight. I would be in favor of creating both because we do need to do a better job of defending human rights in our area. And that applies to the LGBT community as well. And while not gay myself, I do have a lot of gay friends and everything, and I consider myself an ally of the LGBTQIA community. So anything to help out in that regard.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mike. Next up is Logan Healy. Same question. Would you support the creation of a LGBTQ Commission or a Human Rights Commission in the city of Overland Park?
You know, as a city of 200,000 people, I think we'd be big enough to certainly justify having a commission specific to our LGBTQ+ community. And I think for, you know, we have a lot of smaller communities throughout Johnson County, and I know that the county used to have a Human Relations Commission to serve that role. And I think reinstating that at the county level, not only for Overland Park's participation, but also for some of the smaller communities as well, would be a great idea. In 2019, I led the city's passing of legal protections for LGBTQ+ community members with an anti-discrimination ordinance, better known as an NDO, as well as adding to our hate crime law protections for LGBTQ+ community members. And at the time, and I believe still today, with Wichita debating the issue, Overland Park is the largest community in the state of Kansas that has legal protections for our LGBTQ community members. And as I said, the night that we ended up passing the NDO to our LGBTQ friends who work, worship, attend schools, patronize our businesses, you deserve love, you deserve to live your life, you deserve respect, and you're welcome in the city of Overland Park. And I will continue my advocacy on behalf of all groups that may face discrimination to make sure that Overland Park is a welcoming community. We went through a large community visioning process called Forward OP, and our community called on our city to be a welcoming community. And we, as elected officials, need to make sure we're doing everything we can to ensure that the city of Overland Park is welcoming to everybody.
Great. Thank you, Logan. Next, we have Carol. Same question. Would you support the creation of a Human Rights Council or an LGBTQ Commission in the city of Overland Park?
Yes, I would want to know one thing. What are the tenets and the principles involved in this coalition? I am for human rights. I want everyone to be treated equally, no matter if they're anti-gay or gay. I have many gay friends. I have been over backwards to help show houses, find homes for, and even sat beside my lesbian friends next door, dying father, and comforted them with all my heart and helped them whenever they were in terrible accidents. And I took good care of them. I think we need to take good care of everybody and be fair to everybody. There are some people that we are wrongly labeled hateful. As Christians, we are not labeled as hateful Christians. We love everybody. We're just as much of a sinner as anyone else. But we don't hate gays. We love everybody. And I certainly love everybody. And if I have gay neighbors, they're welcome to my help in any way possible. And you can see that in the neighborhood I lived in, in Squire Park, Missouri, and One East Block of Truce. I had many helpful gay people to help me with the crime situation. And I certainly want to be fair to Christians and gay people.
Thank you, Carol. Ryan?
Thanks, Leon. Yeah, I will completely echo everything that's been said so far and say that is 100% something that the city should be doing is creating that commission. I think the NDO was a great first step, and I'd like to see that taken further to make sure that we, as a city, are doing everything to enforce that NDO and make sure that we are making every Overland Park resident's life as amazing as possible because, you know, as we've said over and over again, this is an amazing city that everybody wants to come and live in. And we need to make sure that we, as a community, are welcoming every citizen that wants to come and live here and wants to contribute to the city. So anything that we can do as a governmental organization to help make their lives easier in any aspect, whether it be anything the government specifically is doing or anything that we can work with the business community in or anything we can work with social groups and churches and neighborhood organizations with. I think that's a great place to start from, and I'd like to see that happen. So definitely, yes.
Thank you, Ryan. Melissa?
Well, I'm so glad you asked this question because I believe that Overland Park does need to be a welcoming community for everyone. That's both our LGBTQ neighbors, as well as neighbors from other different backgrounds, including different race, ethnic, nationality backgrounds, disability, family type. I was also a very active advocate for the non-discrimination ordinance. I spoke at the public hearing, and I argued that this was not only the right thing to do on a moral level, but also something we needed to do to stay competitive economically. Companies do not want to locate in a city where some of their employees don't feel welcome. So it's both an economic imperative and imperative for the city's success, as well as the right thing to do. I absolutely support tackling issues of discrimination and equity from a systems perspective. It's not just about being polite to people, but about understanding what systems are at work that are keeping some people at a disadvantage. So I'm absolutely interested in that. I haven't given much thought to the idea of creating a commission or an advisory board, so I wouldn't be ready to commit to that. I serve on one of the city's volunteer advisory boards, and I know that sometimes that can, it sometimes almost feels like it can slow things down more than it speeds things up. And I also understand that it takes a lot of resources in a city like this. We meet monthly, and so we have multiple staff who help plan our meetings and are there. So I think we would just want to make sure we're getting the right cost-benefit analysis and just doing what works for the city that helps us advance these goals. I also would commit to speak out more forcefully against attacks on our LGBTQ neighbors when they come from Topeka. I think that we need leaders at the local level to make sure that our Overland Park representatives in Topeka are not harming our Overland Park community.
Thank you, Melissa. And Tony?
Hi, yes. So Overland Park has taken a nice first step in passing the non-discrimination ordinance in 2019. I absolutely would support a Human Rights Commission and an LGBTQ Commission in Overland Park. I'd also propose an LGBTQ liaison be designated to serve among the city staff and public safety departments. We should also begin the work to ban conversion therapies in Overland Park and test the limits of authority by taking a stand against legislation attempting to be passed in Topeka that excludes our trans youth. Representation matters in all levels of government. And when elected, I would be the first member of the LGBTQ community to serve on the Overland Park City Council. That would be progress in Overland Park. Additionally, we should celebrate the many diverse cultures of our residents. The Vision OP Plan includes the expansion and creation of a community-wide event celebrating cultural diversity. I propose a Culture and Diversity Committee be established to facilitate these events and to provide insight and guidance to the city council. We have more work to do, such as ensuring our city workforce, including first responders, are as diverse as the community they serve and that Overland Park is welcoming to all.
Fantastic. Thank you, Tony. And so for this round, for the next question, we're going to shift the order just a bit. So Logan, you'll be up first. What specific action should your city take to continue to ensure affordable housing is available? And again, we're going to Logan Healy from Ward 1.
Yeah, thank you for asking this question. I view housing affordability as the biggest challenge in our community right now, and I think it's going to be a challenge for us for years to come. I would support changes to zoning to allow for more diverse and affordable housing options in our city. I think as a city, that's one of the best places where we can act. There's obviously a lot of things that the state and the county can also do to help with housing affordability. As a recent first-time homebuyer, I know firsthand that housing affordability is one of our community's biggest challenges right now. And I will tell you that the apartment that I moved out of, you know, just a few months ago, they are renting it out for about $300 more than what I was paying. So it's not just unaffordable right now for renters, but also for people that are challenged to find a home and buy a home. The 2021 Johnson County Housing Study was recently released with recommendations on how to make our community more healthy and affordable for all. I think we need to do our part in Overland Park, as the largest city in the county, to help implement those recommendations. Among the recommendations, which I support, we're adding more townhomes, patio homes, doing triplexes, cohousing, and accessory dwelling units to our city's housing stock. I live in a duplex across the street and next to single-family housing. We get along just fine with denser uses. But that's why also, when developers have come asking for incentives, I tell them that they need to help us with our housing affordability challenges in our city. I have a record of getting those commitments, and if I get a few more allies on the city council, we can get more of those commitments. We won't solve this challenge overnight, but housing affordability is, and I think will continue to be, my top priority for our community.
Thanks, Logan. Carol, you're up next. Same question. How would you continue to ensure affordable housing is available in your city?
I totally agree with Mr. Healy that we need affordable housing. And I am so happy to join him, if I get elected, to work with him on getting this problem solved. Right now, I looked on Realtor.com, and also I'm on MLS. And as a few days ago, there were at least 20 homes for sale under $150,000. Many of those were condos and townhouses. So there are homes available, and people need, maybe they don't have enough for a down payment. Maybe they think their credit is not good. I can help them because your credit doesn't have to be really high to get a grant from Kansas. It's wonderful. $640 is the lowest you can go. And I can help them, even help them raise their credit. I don't have. Been through a whole bunch of problems myself. I would totally agree with Logan. We need to make an offer incentives to these apartment buildings to produce townhouses and condos that people will buy and be proud to live in. Apartment, there are 65% of Overland Park owned homes. The rest are apartment dwellers. That is unacceptable. I would like to help work with him on that. And as a Realtor, I would help anybody find a home and help them raise their credit and do everything I can to work with him on that problem. I agree, we need to have less, more townhomes, more affordable homes. But there are 20 out there right now. But there are 20 out there right now, ready to be sold. Now, I went on Realtor.com because there's for sale by owners too that people don't know about. So I'm not trying to produce business for myself, but any Realtor could ask me for help and I'll show them how to do it.
Thank you, Carol. Perfect. So up next is Ryan Spencer. Same question.
Yeah, the idea of denser housing options literally is not affordable. Though the ones that are being built and developed in Overland Park are not affordable, as has been mentioned before. They're what we're lovingly referring to as luxury units, luxury apartment complexes. They're running about $800 to $900 more per month than a similar apartment setup and even most mortgages right now at the time as well. I definitely think that we need to be looking beyond apartments. Actually, a lot of times people say, oh, we need to build more apartments. That's not necessarily the case. You know, the denser units are just going to be increasing the prices of everything around them, pricing people out of the homes that they've built and bought for 20, 30 years now, put their life savings into. I like the idea of smaller multi-unit options. As I mentioned in another debate, we do have what's called Oxford Row, right across the street from where I live. They're 80th and Glenwood. They're little two-story units. There's about 16 of them on probably two lots, I imagine is what it is. But it's a great setup because it blends right in with the natural environment. It blends right in with the single-family homes around them. They're not these five, six-story skyscrapers. I say that because that's what it looks like compared to downtown Overland Park that are going up, that are pricing everybody out of the area. So I'd like to see more of those kinds of things done. And especially, I like the idea of these hotels. I worked in extended stay hotels for years and I always thought working in them, that it would be perfect if you turned them into housing, you can beat them. And unfortunately, one of the unfortunate side effects of the pandemic is this lack of hotel travel and lack of business because everybody's doing it, as you can see, online. So if we can take some of those places and actually have developers who want to spend their own dollar to come in and actually renovate them and turn them into market rate apartments, these studios, one bedroom, something that can really actually generally be affordable. I think that's a perfect solution as well.
Thank you, Ryan. Melissa, how are you thinking about affordable housing in Overland Park?
Sure. Well, I agree. This is a very big issue for Overland Park. We pride ourselves on being one of the best places in the country to raise a family. And housing affordability was one of the reasons my family chose to live here. When we moved to Overland Park with our baby, I had just quit my job to be a stay-at-home mom. My husband had taken a substantial pay cut to start his own business and we were still able to afford a great home here in Ward Two of Overland Park. But I have seen prices go up so much since we've lived here that I'm not sure a family in the same circumstance would be able to move into my neighborhood right now. So this is very much a middle-class issue and a family issue that's going to require some good problem solving. I was also a part of the Housing for All Task Force last year, the countywide effort. They put together a 300-page report with a lot of good ideas, a couple that I really like. The first is the Incremental Development Alliance. Had actually already done some work with the city of Overland Park on how they could make their zoning codes work better for that missing middle housing. We've done a good job with the large apartments. We've done a good job with the large single-family homes, but how do we build that stuff in the middle? I also really like the idea of the granny flats or accessory dwelling units. This might be a tiny home in a backyard or it might be an apartment above the garage where maybe your recent college grad or an aging parent could move in to be close to home. Maybe a retired couple who's on a fixed income could rent that out and that would allow them to stay in their home as they age. I also think it's really important to look at the full cost of living in Overland Park. I have successfully advocated as a member of the Environmental Advisory Council for new homes to be made more energy efficient for the strongest energy efficiency code in the county. We've pushed for a retrofit program for existing homes. If your utility bill is lower, that's going to lower your cost of living in Overland Park. And the same thing goes if you can access more affordable transportation options. Those are also climate solutions, so that's a great bonus.
Great. Thank you, Melissa. Tony?
Yes, thank you. So affordable housing is a problem in Overland Park and throughout Johnson County. You know, many of my thoughts, you've heard from some of the other candidates already. You know, recently, we've seen a proliferation of apartments in recent years. And all too often, they're luxury apartments. They're not accessible to lower-income households. I would certainly support zoning changes specifically intended to provide additional affordable housing. This could be a combination of streamlining the permitting process, increasing density limits and revising parking requirements. Generally, traditional apartment complexes are associated with affordable housing. But we can also explore the multifamily townhome development and, as Melissa mentioned, the accessory dwelling units. We've had three recent developments where a former hotel space was converted to studio and one-bedroom affordable apartments. With, that's a great idea. And with the changing work environment, many people find themselves now permanently working from home. There may be even more commercial space available that can be repurposed at a much lower cost than building from the ground up to provide affordable housing units. Single-family homes, which, you know, comprise about 60% of residences in Overland Park, are often out of reach for our lower-income families due to the maintenance costs involved. I would explore rehabilitation and maintenance programs for single-family homes. And I also would be supportive of providing tax breaks or those incentives to developers of affordable housing projects that provide commitments to providing attainable housing with controlled rents.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Tony. And Mike, same question. How would you ensure affordable housing is available in Overland Park?
I like the idea of converting hotels into apartments for middle and working-class people. I wish we had done that instead of tearing down the old Holiday Inn at Seymour Parkway in Metcalf. And yeah, we do have a problem with affordable housing and and it's not helps by building luxury apartments in downtown. It's also not helps and this is one of the reasons I decided to run. Right next to my house, there's a new house just finished being built. A, the neighbors didn't want it and B, I had lunch with my brother, my father and our former banker yesterday. And I learned the price of that house, if you want to buy it, it's yours for a cool half a million. That doesn't sound affordable to me. So for me, the key to doing even single-family units like the one I just talked about. Yeah, there has to be no profit motive into it. Otherwise, I keep jacking up and jacking up to the points that the average worker, well, they can't afford to live near where they work right now if they work in Johnson County. But we got to do a better job in that. And this is not just a Johnson County issue. This is a national issue. So, but small, small little things like that.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate the answer. So this will be the last question before we move into close. We'll start with Carol. How will you handle rezoning issues that come before the council to balance residents' and business interest?
Well, since I haven't been on the city council, I would work with everybody to do what is right. And we have to make sure that Overland Park is safe and that it is happy and that it is comfortable for everybody. And rezoning, we would look into that and make a logical, we do research and get the best answers we can possibly get. I'm more concerned about the crime issue. I found out the FBI projects in 2021, there'll be 4,000 victims of crime in Overland Park. Property and violent crime, that's more important to me. And I want to tell you that the FBI and the police have told me most of the crime is caused by meth addiction and binge drinking. So I would work passionately on getting beds for those people to get free of this horrible addiction. Rezoning, yes, that's important, but there's more important things than rezoning. I will work with the board or work with Overland Park to do the best I can to find out what is the proper method of rezoning. But I'm more important, I'm more, in 1990s, the Crips and the gangster disciples brought in meth. There's 380 cars stolen every year in Overland Park. That's unacceptable to me. It's unacceptable to me that crime is going up 11% a year. To me, I have worked in the inner city and know how to handle this. I have worked in Squire Park, which was filled with much crime. And we cleaned it up with the help of the mayor, the city council, the chief of police and the community members. And it is now a safe place. That's what I want to do for Overland Park.
Thank you, Carol. Next up is Ryan Spencer. Same question.
For rezoning, I think a prime example of that would be the attempted development of what they wanted to do with Ranchmark. This is an example where the developer said something of mine and the citizen said something else of mine. The citizens actually pushed back and they get ready to come to a compromise that everybody was agreement on. When it comes to rezoning issues, I don't answer to developers. I don't answer to business owners. I answer to the residents of the city. And as I say in all my campaign literature, the citizens of the city, the residents that live here know the city better than even the 12 people sitting on the council do. So if there's people within whatever new radius that we're deciding on, that we need to alert to what's going on, I want to extend that probably even another mile beyond that because they all need to know, they all need to be involved in the process. And if they're pushing back and they're saying that we don't want this, then we need to come back to the table and figure out something better. And then we're not going to do it until the residents are happy with what's going on. I want to make sure that the residents are happy with the actual buildings that are going up, the size, the usage, that they're aware of all the studies that have been done to make sure that they know their traffic patterns are not going to be too much affected and that water drainage and all that's been affected. It needs to be a transparent issue from day one for the residents that they're going to be living around that development. And in the end, that needs to be taken into effect, number one, above anything else.
Fantastic. Thank you, Ryan. Melissa?
This is a great question. And as I think about it, my goal wouldn't be to pick a side between residents and businesses. It would be really to get everyone around a table and see if we can find win-win solutions that work for the entire community. You know, I think there's been a lot of this rhetoric about which side residents or businesses. But the truth is, residents want businesses to shop at, residents want businesses to work at. So we really need both to be a successful community. And that's really the goal, is to find the win-win solutions. And I think that there are some great examples of that in our area. I live walking distance from a project that's not in Overland Park, but the Meadowbrook Park. You know, that's an example of a really successful change in zoning. I walk over there regularly with friends, with my kids. There's housing, there's commercial activity. And that's something that I think largely the community could get behind, both residents and businesses. I think we see something similar happening in downtown Overland Park where you have housing going in, you have a more vibrant destination. And so those would be the kinds of things that I think we should be seeking our win-win solutions because we need both residents and businesses to be a successful community. I do think that residents deserve predictability when they make an investment in a home. So I'm happy that the city has in the plan for next year to begin what they're calling a comprehensive plan. I've had to have that explained to me several times because I didn't know we had a comprehensive plan or what a new one might be. But what I'm hearing is that that would be a community, citizen, resident-led conversation about what we need as a community because it's not working to have these piecemeal discussions about one parcel or another. We really do need to have a community-wide conversation about how we're going to reach those goals so that we are a community where our kids are going to want to stay.
Thank you, Melissa. Tony?
Ah, yes. Wow. So this is a topic near and dear to me. As I mentioned earlier, you know, I organized along with a few of my neighbors to fight a rezoning request last year. This was a rezoning request that would place initially a six-story apartment building right next door to single-family homes. It was totally inappropriate for the location. There were, the developer was asking for variances to the unified development ordinance. You know, this is part of our municipal code. And the zoning ordinances are put into place and adopted for a reason, for a purpose. And, you know, as I've become more familiar with the different development proposals across the city, there's a number of variations that take place, in my opinion, too often. If those variances are needed on such a regular basis, then I believe we need to review the municipal code and change that. Otherwise, we should follow the municipal code and we should not allow these large apartment buildings right next door to existing single-family homes. The other part of the rezoning requests we should always consider is the Golden Rules. There was a lawsuit, Golden versus Overland Park in 1978, that established, I think it was 15 criteria that should be the basis for all rezoning requests. And I was of the opinion, going through this opposition process, that our planning commission and our city council did not follow the intent of the Golden Rules. And again, that's my opinion of that as someone who was involved in that opposition. Yes, it does take about between residence and development, but our residents should come first. We have an established neighborhood that's been here many years and it's not right for an out-of-place, too tall apartment complex to move in. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Mike, same question. How would you handle rezoning issues that come up before the council?
Well, I think we've already touched on the two perfect examples of the council not listening to the citizens in this regard. One, my neighborhood, and two, the Ranchmark development. I think, I think this issue in particular is a perfect example of where we need to, as city council members, do a better job listening to the wishes of the citizens. This is, of course, going to be slightly different from business interests. And I am in favor of more mixed-use developments and everything. But again, it's got to be affordable, going back to the housing issue. It's got to be affordable. No more of these luxury developments like what's been going on downtown. That thing that's keep it affordable and affordable for not just new residents, just looking for jobs, but also for entrepreneurs who may not have the millions of dollars or the initial capital to get a business started other than outside their home. That's where I stand on the issue.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Logan, same question. How would you handle rezoning issues that come before the council to balance residents' and business interest?
Thanks for the question. This is one of the reasons why I do not accept campaign contributions from developers. I want to make sure that the people know that I'm not conflicted on these issues. So that's first of all. Second of all, I think a great example of where we succeeded in specifically getting townhomes built is what Mr. Spencer brought up earlier, the Oxford Row Townhomes just east of Metcalf on 80th Street. And that was an effort that my council wardmate at the time and I worked closely with the developer to ensure that the neighborhood had proper notification of what the developer was planning. And of course, you know, these developers do have property rights inherent to them owning the land, but they still, the neighbors have their rights as well. But this was a situation where, you know, I kind of expected neighbors to have some opposition and there certainly were elements of that. But we had multiple neighborhood meetings where the developer, city council members, including myself and the neighbors, got together to go over the project and address those concerns. And ultimately, the neighborhood was supportive of the project. And I think as Mr. Spencer brought up, you know, it seems to fit in nicely to the neighborhood. So that's why following that process, I champion on the city council requiring neighborhood So that's why following that process, I champion on the city council requiring neighborhood meetings when there are rezonings that put denser uses next to single-family homes specifically. I think we have a ways to go in terms of modernizing our transparency and engagement efforts as a city. I started that with getting our city to start live streaming all our council meetings. And I was the first council member to be active on social media. But we need to keep modernizing and moving our city into the twenty twenties.
Thank you, Logan. So now we will do a one-minute close for each candidate. Before we do that, I just want to say thank you for everyone being here. And I know Mike, Michael will do a close as well, but thank you for allowing me to moderate today. So we'll start with Carol, who will do a one-minute, one-minute, one-minute close for the, for the event.
Hi. Okay, my passion and my research show there are thirty thousand people over the age of sixty-five in Overland Park. And some of them are on social security. And they have been paying taxes, property taxes for twenty, thirty years. And now, social security doesn't cover enough to stay in their homes. So I really believe we need to look at our senior citizens as wonderful chances to improve their property and to improve their lifestyle by giving them a break on property taxes. When you've paid all your life on property taxes and then you keep going and paying and paying and paying, that's just unacceptable to me. I will help those senior citizens and I will do my best to get everybody to recognize the need for that. And that is my passion right now because I know many citizens who are senior and elderly who cannot stay in their homes anymore. We need to give them a break on property taxes. They've paid tons and tons of money in there. And I think, okay.
Thanks. Thanks so much. Yeah, no, no worries. So next up is Ryan Spencer, a one-minute close.
Thank you. So anyway, so basically, a vote for Ryan Spencer gives you a no to tax breaks for large development projects. They don't need, need it. Blue Hawk, Brookridge, the downtown opia apartments that divert money away from schools, parks and infrastructure. It's a yes to making sure that our first responders are fully funded and get hazard pay when appropriate. It's a no on misusing federal COVID relief funds. It's a yes to finding alternatives to chip seal now, not later. Residents of this first-class city deserve better. It's a yes for pushing for single-family homes, market-rate apartments and townhomes that allow for stratified housing options and no more tax-accented luxury high-rises. And it's a yes to supporting our downtown Overland Park businesses by moving farmers' market back now. Let it spread out and have surrounding residents, downtown park, business owners and vendors be the deciding factor in the market going forward at the out-of-state developers. I look forward to your vote August third. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ryan. Melissa, one minute.
Well, thanks, everyone, for participating tonight. Again, my name's Melissa Cheatham, and I'd love to represent you if you live in Ward Two. I'm a mom and an experienced problem solver, and I hope I'll knock on your door so I can tell you about some of the problems I've been solving in my neighborhood from getting the police departments to work together so we'd have a crossing guard for our kids to get to school safely, organizing a neighborhood trash program that saves everyone in my neighborhood money, getting the strongest energy efficiency code in the county, get, coming up with an incentive so home builders can make new homes ready for electric vehicles and solar panels. I've been solving problems and I'm ready to do it again. I'd love to hear what's on your mind and what kind of problems I can help solve for you. I appreciate your votes.
Thanks, Melissa. Tony?
Ah, yes. Thanks to everyone who is viewing tonight. I appreciate you taking time out of your evening to learn more about me and, of course, all the other candidates. You know, Overland Park is one of the best cities to live, and I'm proud to call it home for the last eleven years. I want everything that's great about Overland Park to continue. And most of all, I want our residents to be happy and feel they are valued. I don't have an agenda. I'm not guided by outside interests. I just want to represent the residents of Ward Two to the best of my ability. Be a voice for them by listening to them and respecting their opinions. We need council members who are engaged, who are transparent and responsive to the residents. I am that person. I've listened to the concerns of neighbors. I've made a plan of action. I've presented to both the planning commission and city council. I've met with that developer and city staff to find an acceptable solution. In the end, I was successful in fighting another large apartment complex. I will work just as hard for you as your city council member. I would appreciate your vote in the primary election. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Mike?
So, and then, so in addition to the stuff that we talked about tonight, yeah, we need less things like Brookridge, Blue Hawk, COVID money going to soccer video equipment and stuff like it. We need more restoring traffic lights, like at Ninety-first and Glenwood. We need more historical preservation, especially in downtown. And we need people that will listen to the voices of the people. And that is why I am running. You can find me on Facebook, facebook.com/ski, the number four Kansas is where you'll find me. And I look forward to your vote on August third.
Thank you, Mike. Logan?
Thank you very much to the mainstream coalition and the sponsoring groups for putting this on tonight and this opportunity. My name is Logan Healy. I'm currently serving Ward One on the Overland Park City Council, and I ask for your vote for another four years. My significant other and I, and then my parents, and then my brother, his wife and my new niece, all live in a straight line in the heart of Ward One between Metcalf and Antioch. And for the first couple of years of my term, I was able to represent my grandfather as well in, in Ward One. So I have a vested interest in our community. I care about our community. I want to see us succeed. Transparency, engagement have been key priorities in my first term. I have hosted more than two dozen town hall meetings for residents to engage with me directly. Like I mentioned, I was the first Overland Park City Council member to be active on social media, and I plan to continue prioritizing transparency engagement in my second term. In the next four years, as we look towards the next sixty years of our city, I believe the issues of housing affordability, infrastructure, public health and safety, and climate change will need to be primary focuses of our elected officials if we hope to maintain the high quality of life we currently enjoy in our community. And I thank you very much for the opportunity and please go vote on or before August third.
Thanks, Logan. And thank you to the mainstream coalition for having the Mid-America LGBT Chamber support this event and allowing me, Leon Hardin, to moderate. So again, my name is Leon Hardin. I'm the, my day job is diversity, equity and inclusion strategy manager for Burns and McDonald's. And I'm also the policy chair for the Mid-America LGBT Chamber of Commerce. I'm looking forward to this conversation tonight. And I think we will go ahead and get started with our first candidate and first question with Ty Gardner, who is out of Ward Four. The first question is just talk a little bit about your, your connection to Overland Park and why you're running.
Yeah, sure. So first off, thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. I know that there are a lot of things that you can do with your time and spending it on a Zoom, watching city council candidates is not necessarily the most exciting thing. But it's a really important thing. So, so thank you. My connection to the city, I'm a first-generation Overland Park resident. And I know that's not what we're supposed to say in these, in these, in these forums where everyone wants to tell you how deep their roots are and how connected they are, how their great-grandfather laid the founding brick for our city. I'm a first-generation person, but that really means a lot to me to be able to live in this great community as a, as somebody who grew up in poverty. To, to be able to live here is something that I looked at as unattainable when I was a kid. And now I'm here and I get to raise my five-month-old son here, and I'm just thrilled to do it. So why I'm actually running for city council is because of that five-month-old son. I see the need to build for his future, and I see a lot of work that needs to be done that's not being done right now. I think that we need to work so hard to engage a new generation because like me, so many people are not able to live here their whole lives like they could have in a different generation. So what does that mean? That means that we don't have people my age that have deep roots to the city. I think that's going to play, that, that's going to be a negative impact to our city for a long time by not having that level of civic engagement, that not, not having that level of civic pride is going to have on our city. So I think we need leadership that understands that new generation. Let me, let me take a step back. Leadership that first and foremost needs to protect the interest of the people who are already participating. We can't lose sight of that as we're building for the future. But I, I think we can do both things at once. I think we can do that and be able to say, we need to draw on a new generation. So we need leadership that understands that generation, understands how to communicate with them and can bring them in, is going to put in the work to bring them in. And I don't see that being done right now. I don't see that level of voter engagement for a new generation. And so I think that's important to do. That's what I'm here to do while also protecting the needs of the people who are participating now.
Thank you, Ty. Next up, we have Stacy Graham, same question. What, what is your connection to Overland Park and, and why are you running?
Well, thank you so much for having me. My roots do run deep in Overland Park, and my depth of experience with the city gives me a diverse understanding of this community and who lives here and who wants to live here and what we can do for the future. So I grew up here. I graduated from Shawnee Mission South. I went to KU, and when my husband and I got married, we decided to raise our two amazing kids here. I am a lifelong community volunteer. So before my kids came along, that meant that I volunteered as a CASA volunteer. I was the president of an organization that helped out low-income single mothers. I worked in a mediation program in the high schools. And then when my kids came along, I turned my volunteer commitments to them. So I volunteered in their schools all the way through, room parent, you know, PTO, all of that stuff, until they graduated from Blue Valley Northwest High School. And for the last eight years of that, I put uniforms on the band at Blue Valley Northwest. But as they got older, I reignited my interest in the community and turned again my volunteer commitments that way. And I graduated from Leadership Overland Park. And I joined the Overland Park Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors and then was able to get on the executive committee. I have worked in my career in businesses that were based in Overland Park for over twenty years. And I'm currently a vice president at CNA Insurance, which is located in Overland Park. I've had the opportunity to be on committees for the Blue Valley School District for Advent South Hospital. Just a lot of community involvement that I think has given me a real unique understanding of all of the different ways the city works and the people that it touches, the different demographics that we have of people living here. All of that gave me the motivation to apply for the vacancy on the council because I wanted to give back to this city in a way I hadn't before and to give back to the city that had given so much to me and my family. I have kids who are getting ready to start their working lives. I want to make this a city that works for them. I have parents that are aging in the city and still live in the house I grew up in, and I want the city to work for them. So I think the benefit of my experience also gives me a unique view as to how this city can build on its strengths and grow even better in the future.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Next up, Scott Boucher from Ward Four, same question. Scott, I think you may be on mute.
About now. We got me?
Got you covered.
All right. I think my roots started here in Overland Park about six years ago. I moved here from Las Vegas when I was transferred out. I was the, ended up being the regional training manager, the director of leadership development. I also worked as an operations manager for McDonald's Corporation. Spent twenty-seven years working with all kinds of diverse work groups, from the young to the old. And I moved here with my family back in nineteen eighty-nine, pretty much raised them in Olath until my son become a police officer in Overland Park. At that time, as my wife and I were downsizing, I was getting ready to kind of do semi-retirement. We moved to Overland Park next to my son so that I could watch his granddaughter since he was working the midnight shift. My roots are tied here forever with my son being killed in the line of duty as an Overland Park police officer. He rests here. My wife now rests here. And as I was watching him interact with the city council, as I was watching him interact with the different forms of government in the city, I found that maybe things weren't all that they were supposed to be. And I decided that as a agent of change, I was going to run for the council to take care of some things that I think need to be addressed. I'm not saying that Overland Park is a bad place to live, work and play. It most certainly is not. It's a great place to live, work and play. But like with anything, when we start to rest on our laurels, we never move ahead. And that's what I plan on doing. I plan on moving the city ahead as it comes to public safety, respecting the taxpayer, improving our infrastructure and preserving our quality of life.
Thank you, Scott, for that answer. Next up, Amy Goodman Long.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, hi. How are you? Well, I, I like Stacy. I was born and, well, I was born and raised here. I've lived in Overland Park for over forty years. I went to Shawnee Mission Schools, Blue Valley, Johnson County, and then I finished up my social work degree at the University of Kansas.
So I'm not going to lie, I'm a little excited for this panel tonight. And this would probably be more my line of knowledge base as opposed to some of the more business-oriented type topics. So I hope I can add a little bit of, of zest here. But I'm really proud of my time as a social worker. I've been a social worker for twenty years. I went into it, originally I had a grandmother who had Alzheimer's disease and I just always had a knack for relating to the elderly. So my passion is definitely geriatrics. But one of the benefits of being a social worker is over my twenty years, I got to work in all areas. So I've, I've worked in inner-city Kansas City. I've worked in, in the rich, rich suburbs of Johnson County, and, and that's allowed me to get to know people from all backgrounds. But nonetheless, I'm, I'm an Overland Park girl. I've been very privileged to have two parents that, that came out of poverty and, and built a really good life for my sister and I here. So I decided to run. I really studied the city and state government for the last four years. And some of the more ultra-conservative movements kind of drove a lot of my desire. And I decided that my voice as a social worker could have a really important impact within the city. So here I am. And I'm a mom to an eleven-year-old. Yeah, don't want to leave him out.
Thank you, Amy, for, for that answer. Next up is Sam Passer.
Hey there. Thanks. I think starting with my interest in this type of activity, growing up in Omaha, Nebraska, we had several folks in our neighborhood that held various offices. And I had a warped childhood that I thought it might be cool someday to do something like this. So I have pity on how I was brought up, if you don't mind. Thanks. I then kind of went off to college, started a job, started working. And, you know, you're kind of in the rat race and, you know, looking after others was something that was more kind of secondary for me as I was building a family and, and doing things more to kind of grow my career. Obviously, I volunteered and I did things, but investing time in something like this just was far, far from, from what I was considering. During that window, I was able to work at several different companies. I've been fortunate enough to lead teams of over two hundred people, working, be responsible for several million dollars in budget. Throughout that time, I've been recognized by the Kansas City Business Journal for an innovative program that we did, an Impact Award. Been recognized by Ingram's Business Journal for some accomplishments and even was recognized by the US government with a US patent for an innovative program that we did at a prior employer. So definitely kept myself busy. And then one day, one of my supervisors said, why don't you use a program called Leadership Overland Park? And that's a program, if you're not familiar with it, through the Chamber of Commerce where I had the opportunity to learn more about the city, be introduced to some of its leaders. And I just felt really inspired when I completed that program. There was so much that planning and forethought that have gone into this place that I just really felt blessed to be here, and I wanted to do something to add some value back. So when I heard John Thompson wasn't running for reelection, I decided this was something that was for me. I've enjoyed meeting many residents, and the issues that are coming out are so important that I'm just excited to be here today talking with all of you.
Thank you, Sam. And I should mention that Amy Goodman Long and Sam Passer are both from Ward Five. And then we'll move on to Sheila Rodriguez, who is also from Ward Five.
Thank you. Thank you, Leon. Yep, my name is Sheila Rodriguez. My husband and I moved to Overland Park in nineteen ninety-five. We raised two kids here. I've got a daughter that graduated from KU last May and a son that's finishing his final year at K-State. I've worked for the same company for about twenty years now, T-Mobile headquarters, formerly known as Sprint. And I've served as a board member on the Lexington Park Association, Homes Association, for the last fifteen years, chaired a number of different variety of neighborhood committees. I have volunteered for more than sixteen years in the Blue Valley School District. And I think my, my roots and my passion for providing Blue Valley families with just an exceptional public school experience. just an exceptional public school experience fueled my energy to serve multi-year terms as um, yearbook chair and editor, community service chair, um, project graduation chair and numerous other committees. I even continued chairing project graduation for our seniors after my youngest had graduated until the role could be transitioned to a new chairman. I've also volunteered extensively with nonprofit organizations um, here in Overland Park. I'm currently the fundraising chairman for Keep the Spark Alive, a, a local organization that's determined to prevent teen suicide through innovative programs. I'm also the recipient of the Paul Harris Fellow Award from the Rotary Foundation. Um, so if I have the privilege of serving on city council, I, I really look forward to bringing those twenty-five years or so professional experience and community involvement to the position. I believe I can help strengthen transparency and collaboration as well as restore trust and confidence with residents. Um, I truly believe I can make a difference by simply listening and seeking input from residents and business owners, listening to their concerns and then advocating on their behalf. And bringing my high energy and collaborative nature to city council to, to get things accomplished. So thanks for the opportunity to participate tonight.
Thank you, Sheila. Um, so we will rotate the question orders uh, per, per each question. So we're going to start with Stacy Graham next. Uh, what will you do to expand the use of minority business enterprises or disadvantaged business enterprises in the city of Overland Park? How will you ensure that new contracts have a diverse spend requirement?
That's an excellent question. Um, this is a huge challenge for Overland Park. To really not just in this aspect of diversity, but in many different aspects of diversity because um, it's just the way forward for the city. So we have to do a few things. One is, first of all, we have to focus on it, which we're not really doing right now. Um, that means that we might need to put together um, some sort of advisory group on it. Um, to tackle diversity, not only with regard to our contracts for business, but also with regard to membership on things like boards and commissions and committees, because that's another area we need to work on. Um, and then we need to um, ensure that the right people are on it. So um, these are not just people that are going to be council members or the usual people that you see on the boards and commissions that we populate now. They're also going to have to be residents. Um, we're going to have to go out in the community and find the right people to be on. Um, and then we're going to have to police ourselves. So after you um, launch an investor, an initiative like this, uh, you have to make sure that you are fulfilling the principles you set out to fulfill. That means that you'll have to go back and check regularly to see how much progress you've made. You know, how many contracts have you issued? Um, that meet the criteria you set for yourself. Um, and, and so it's going to be, it would be an ongoing initiative. It would have to be something that you commit to permanently. Um, but well worth doing. This is something I've thought about, not with, uh, not only with regard to diversity and contracts, but also with regard to how we get demographically more diverse um, across the board within the city, the city staff, but also the volunteer opportunities within the city. Um, you know, I am one of only two women on the council, uh, which is, you know, definitely not proportionate to the way the city looks. We have also um, now just come off of Pride Month. Um, I'm part of a company that celebrates that in a very strong way. And I'm acutely aware that as a city, I think we can do a whole lot more on that. So you know, this is just an area across the board in terms of diversity and inclusion in all aspects where I think the city can do better.
Fantastic. Thank you. Uh, up next, Scott Mosher. Same question. How would you expand the use of minority business enterprises and disadvantaged business enterprises in the city of Overland Park? Uh, and look at diverse spend requirements for contracts?
Well, I think uh, diversity is something that we all need to work on and certainly in Overland Park, no less than anywhere else. Uh, we need to promote good people to good things. And we need to have the diversity of women, uh, anyone in the LGBTQ community. Uh, minorities, we need to try to do our best to educate and to work with them. Uh, we need to take good people and put them in place. And we need to remove any barriers it may be. And in some cases, there may be some need to help them along the way. And we need to do that. I think that uh, anyone uh, can succeed today. If we have an open mind and we as a city council, which would be my role, would be to listen to them and find out what uh, they want, find out what they need. And then give them the things that they need. It may be mentoring. It may be uh, some financial help that someone's willing to step up and do. So yes, I believe that uh, diversity should be there. I believe that when we, you know, all succeed as a group, then we all succeed. I really believe that uh, you know, things are one-sided when it's just one ethnicity that's out there. I think we need good ideas from everybody and we need to foster that. And I know that uh, in my professional career, uh, I practiced not only diversity, but I had it just didn't matter who worked for me and what the people that worked for me and the people that I worked with were good people. And we got to look at them as good people and that's all of us. And we need to promote the people that are right for the job. And if somebody needs some help, we need to help them along the way. I was mentored as a young manager after uh, not being promoted for quite a while. And then after that, after being mentored, I excelled in my career. So we all need help and we need to continue to help that with all groups.
Thank you, Scott. Amy Good- Goodman Long. And, and you may be on mute there, Amy.
Thank you.
Good.
Um, well, as I said earlier, I've been really watching and, and studying specifically um, city politics and watched a lot of council meetings. And I'd say one of the proudest moments that I saw over the last couple of years was when the NDO ordinance passed. But um, what I think we need to realize is that's, that's just language. So what do we do from this point on? To promote diversity and uh, non-discrimination, of course, within the city. And, and where can we do that as far as being city officials? Um, policies need to be enacted to support diversity. And number one, that needs to come through uh, the affordable housing initiatives. So whatever we're doing as far as uh, you know, coming up with solutions to allow people to live, work and play of all uh, colors, backgrounds, sexual orientations, we need to make sure that we are incorporating that into our policies. And as Stacy said, we need to go back and we need to be accountable and make sure that, that those things are really happening. Um, so I think that's one definite way as far as a concrete, you know, direction that we can look as far as affordable housing, because we can't really promote diversity until we find ways to help people attain opportunity. And you know, to put it quite bluntly, this is, you know, Overland Park is looked at as um, as a city that, that doesn't have much of that. So um, I see differences just within the city, within Ward One and Ward Six and, and everything in between. And you know, I'm in Ward Five. So I, I sometimes tell people, maybe I'm in the wrong ward. I'm not quite sure how I'm gonna, gonna accomplish this, but I'm going to give it a darn good try. So.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Sam Passer?
I think probably two main areas that I'd emphasize. Uh, first is just opportunity to kind of network and get information. I think the city uh, can help sponsor programs either by itself or partnering with the business community. I know the sport that the city has for the Chamber of Commerce and the events that the chamber has is a great way to encourage events um, within the business community and it could especially focus off minority owned businesses. Um, secondly, I think in addition to providing networking and education opportunities, the city can put its money where its mouth is. And I know many companies have policies in place which promote um, favoring or giving some preferential treatment to minor, minority-owned business. I think when we do that, it's important that we're not forsaking quality, uh, quality or bringing in more spend than we need to. But I think there's a balance where you can provide some um, some, some real incentive and some real focus on encouraging minority-owned businesses to apply for these types of programs. Um, and rewarding uh, well-qualified businesses uh, with the city's spend uh, to really help grow and encourage um, their, their success.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, next up is Sheila Rodriguez.
Yeah, I think we should do everything we can to ensure that Overland Park is a welcoming city to not only our residents, but our, our visit, our business owners. Um, I think it's one thing to say we are a diverse city or we're working on becoming a more diverse city, but it's another to practice it. Um, I think when it's appropriate, we should have a requirement in our RFPs so that if awarded a contract by the city, there's a requirement in there to work with minority or women-owned businesses. I know one of the multi-year projects um, I led a large team on was responding to RFPs and competing um, with other telecoms for the award of installing Wi-Fi networks in airports. So I had the opportunity to work with a lot of airport authorities. Um, and there was one consistent um, requirement across all airports nationwide. And it was to work with their uh, minority and women-owned businesses. So where appropriate, um, they would have to subcontract out either a percentage of that work or for s- specific aspects of that project. And I would like to see us do more of that to help keep the business and revenue stay within our city as much as we can or county. Um, which then further gives back and um, benefits everyone.
Thank you, Sheila. Ty?
All right. Great question. Um, so I think this is important for our city to do first and foremost, because it's the plain old right thing to do. Uh, but even if you looked at this from the most shallow perspective, uh, it is good business for our city to do these things. Uh, you know, our city is living, our, our city is being listed on lists of best places to live in America um, today. But we have to recognize what's landing us on those lists today are not going to be the same things that land us on those lists tomorrow. And as we look to a future generation that's going to want to lay down roots in Overland Park, this is going to be one of those things that lands us on those lists in the future, five, ten, twenty years from now. People aren't going to want to live in a city that doesn't back up uh, their claims to be uh, to, to value diversity and inclusion measures. So I agree with Sheila um, on, on looking to find ways that we can say we need to have X number of uh, our city's businesses when we do RFPs, uh, go to female-owned, minority-owned, uh, veteran-owned businesses. Um, but you know, also what I, what I think is like so many issues in our cities, this comes down to a transparency and accountability issue. So what I've heard so often in the business community is what you measure is what you're going to get. And uh, we all, everyone on this, everyone on this panel, everyone on every panel that's going to do this is going to say this is something that they value. And I think if that is truly the case, we need to have leadership that should want to e- we should be eager to publicly own this. Uh, so that means tracking the data, setting public goals, tracking the data, releasing it regularly in open count, in, in open meetings and asking to be held accountable for it. Um, we should, we should want to own this. We should want leaders to back up these claims of saying they value diversity and inclusion with actual results.
Thank you, Ty. All right. So uh, next question is uh, starting with Scott Mosher. And uh, the question is, tell us about your experience with managing a large bu- budget. And specifically, maybe talk a little bit about what you might change about the budgeting process in Overland Park.
Well, the budgeting process in Overland Park definitely doesn't practice inclusion with the residents. Uh, my experience in managing budgets, uh, when I was with McDonald's Corporation, I actually ran a twenty-six store market of sixty million dollars in sales. I was responsible for seven hundred and fifty employees, including managers all the way down to the newest crew person. I was able to not only manage that budget, but to be under budget or over bu- budget on sales, but under budget on expenses and was one of the best in the country. Uh, was recognized by McDonald's Corporation as a partner. Uh, which very few people are recognized by McDonald's as being a, a partner because of the results that I had over my career. I started off with McDonald's as a maintenance man, cleaning the store at night, worked my way up through the ranks. And everywhere along the way, I had to manage a budget. The city of Overland Park's budget isn't well communicated. I know it can be online and uh, you know, we can get bits and pieces, but we need to practice inclusion when it comes to the budget. We need to budget first and foremost with public safety and services. We need to make sure that our budget includes anything that has to do with schools and public amenities. And then at that point, we can then start to look at what do we do to spend money to do things like roadways and maintenance and things like that. The budget, while I wouldn't necessarily scrap it, I would take a good hard look at it and understand it. And make sure that it lines up with our city plan. The problem is that too often we see a way to grab money from developers from a standpoint of adding apartments or adding this or that. And we, we changed and uh, we allow variances that put our residents in peril for them losing uh, their property values. And too often, we just, we just don't take that into consideration. So with the budget, okay, I'm done.
Uh, so, uh, thank you. Uh, and up next is Amy, Amy Goodman Long.
If you mind, just.
Same question.
Repeating that real quick.
Absolutely. So uh, tell us about your experience with managing a large budget and specifically, uh, talk about anything that you uh, think should change within the budgeting process for the city of Overland Park.
Okay. Um, well, as far as a large budget goes, I've worked mainly in the healthcare realm and I'm currently an administrate, administrator of a home care agency. Um, and I've also been an administrator of a hospice care agency. So um, we work under the realm of often Medicare, Medicaid dollars, uh, nonprofit type environments, for-profit type environments. So mo- most of my budget experience would be through, through that. So I, I don't have any large, huge budget experience when it comes to major corporations or, or anything like that. But I think I, I understand the major gist. Um, so as far as the city budget is concerned, I, I don't see a lot of problems in the budget. I'm, I'm proud to know that they're proceeding with the mental health um, levy or the mill levy increase to promote, of course, mental health awareness. Um, I think the biggest challenge that we're going to face is how do we maintain that budget and the quality of life that people want to obtain here in Overland Park, but also incorporate that sense of diversity and opportunity. Um, and I think we can do it. I do. So that's, that's my, my answer.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, Sam Passer? Same question.
Thank you. Um, so I think I mentioned this earlier, but um, in my professional career, I've had the ability to supervise over teams over two hundred people and had uh, several million dollar budgets that I've been directly accountable for in terms of profit, loss, operating, et cetera. So I've got pretty significant budgetary experience. I think one of the most interesting challenges about the Overland Park budget um, is when we talk about some of these large expenditures, you'll see people that show up at city hall and they say twenty million dollars. Well, that's a rounding error in the city budget. And I like to hope that those people don't know that our city budget's about three hundred million dollars. Or if they think twenty million dollars and a three hundred million is a rounding error, I certainly don't want them anywhere near my taxes. Um, I, I just think there's so much confusion about what our budget is, where that money comes from and where that money goes. One of the things that I've been told that I do well professionally is I simplify the complex. So what I'd love the opportunity to do to break down the budget, put it out on social media and town forums and really say, this is what our budget dollars are for and clear up some of that misconception that exists in our community. Some of it's which even being spread falsely on purpose to try to create conflict and division. And I think reaching that common understanding, we can see what's there. Prioritize what's important and drive the best decisions for the future of Overland Park.
Thank you, Sam. Sheila?
Well, based on the projects that I've managed, I've been accountable for balancing budgets ranging from fifty thousand to a hundred and twenty million. Um, and I believe we need to take a hard look at our budget. I think we need to figure out where, where we are spending our tax dollars and why we believe in twenty twenty-two, we need to increase um, the revenue. I believe we need to prioritize a reinvestment in our core infrastructure and our public services and amenities before any other tax dollars are spent um, on new element projects, particularly that have a tax incentive component that's been promised. I think our residents um, are now looking for answers and paying close attention uh, more so than ever. I think they're looking for transparency and accountability as to how their tax dollars are being spent. Some recent decisions about chip seal continuance, the sixty-nine toll, um, some large multimillion-dollar developments. I think that's all capturing the attention of residents that didn't previously. I think that's all capturing the attention of residents that didn't previously feel like they needed to pay that close attention to our local governing bodies. So I just think that knowing that city council is making informed and prudent decisions will help begin to strengthen their confidence and trust. And the more information we can share with them, the better.
Fantastic. Thank you, Sheila. Ty, same question.
Sure. So I'll share a little bit about my experience managing a budget. And it's a little embarrassing for me because it was the first time I had a chance to manage people, first time I had a chance to manage a budget. I was given this opportunity far before I should have. It was several years ago. I was about 25 years old. And I got an opportunity to take over a sales region. It was a six state sales region where I had about 10 people reporting to me. And my nearest peer who was in this position at the company was probably about twice my age. So I quickly found myself managing people who had more industry experience than I had life experience. And it became very difficult very quickly to, to, to try to connect with them, to try to earn their respect. So I learned from that experience that you have to put in the work, you have to earn people's respect. It's not about just a title. It's about going out there and putting in the work. So, and you know, it was, it was a little bit of a tough start. After I was in there for a while, we were setting records with our budget. We were increasing our budget year after year. So that was my experience managing a budget for the first time, managing people for the first time. As far as the city's budget goes, I think we are making great first steps on issues like mental health, on issues like combating climate change. But I think it's important to look at those through lenses of what's possible today versus what could be possible if we bring new people into the process. So what's possible today with the current electorate, with the current political capital that exists right now are the things that we're seeing. We're talking about mental health tax task force. We're talking about LED light bulbs and the lamps. And those again are great first steps, but when we're talking about big goals, which I think we all have, things like net zero carbon emissions by 2050, those aren't things that you can get to without bringing in a new generation. So until we have leadership that has a plan that's going to actively target bringing in a new generation, who all these issues are wildly popular with, these are not going to be possible. So I understand that the current budget is what it is today, based on what's politically available today. But I think looking long term, there's so much more that's possible if we, if we take an active approach to bringing new people into the process. And that's what I'm committed to do.
Thank you, Ty. Stacy?
Thank you. Well, in my career, I'm responsible for large budgets. So I currently oversee 10 teams of people and I'm responsible for them. And the nature of my career is such that I oversee the teams that handle thousands of litigated matters that comprise tens of millions of dollars of legal expense. So we're responsible for that and I'm responsible for that. But the more important part of your question, I think, has to do with the way we manage the budget in the city. And I really want to get to this because this city budgeting process is so transparent. We start early in the year, we go till September. We publish every detail of that budget in full. You can access it right now if you go to the city website. And there's also a summary of it, you know, if there's shortened summary that you can read an overview of the budget and then dive into detail anytime. That budget is presented at multiple city council meetings. There are public hearings. Each section of it is presented at individual committee meetings and it's reviewed there. And again, that's public. All of those meetings are recorded and live streamed. There's plenty of opportunity to dive in as deep as you want on the budget and understand all parts of it. And we take multiple votes on it, ultimately culminating in the final vote that's coming up. This is a very important process for the city and something that the public has access to. And it's advertised in social media and in the newsletter the city puts out, you know, so it's not something hidden. But as I think has been made very clear by some of these comments tonight, I think we have more to do. You can see that there are perceptions around, you know, the idea that if you issue a tax incentive to a developer, somehow that's taking money out of the city's bank account, which it is not. Or somehow that you could magically come up with $20 million to pay for a chip sealed alternative, which you cannot. You know, I've looked at that budget in detail now for over a year. So these misperceptions caused me to understand that as a council member, I need to do more to explain to my constituents exactly how it all works. And I've been doing that for a year to talk about how tax incentives work, how the budget works, how frugally we run on property taxes that are half or less of neighboring cities in Johnson County. We have benefited from Overland Park as a professionally run city for many years and that budget process is part of that.
Thank you, Stacy. Our, our next question, we'll start with Amy. Do you support a designated time for public comment at council meetings? Why or why not?
I absolutely support that. And as we all know, that was a huge accomplishment that the city, I can't even tell you who, who necessarily proposed that. But unfortunately, it came to a point where, where folks did start taking credit for that. I can tell you from my own background and personal experience that most of the council members are typically approachable and could be contacted prior to public hearing type meetings. But my fear is that sometimes we do become a little too politicized. And, and that, that's kind of what I'd like to not see happen. Because I'd rather see people incorporated in the process than come and have 30 seconds to or three minutes or whatever it is to speak. I'd rather focus on issues that we're talking about earlier as far as diversity and tasks force and different collaborative efforts that we can institute to incorporate people into the processes, whether it's bringing people into government from diverse backgrounds, the programs that we're talking about tonight. But I absolutely support a time when, when the public can come in and speak. I just hope that we can come up with ways to make it more result orientated after the comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy. Sam?
Yes, I do support designated time for public comments, but you know, similar to what Amy was saying, you know, I think that bedrock to a good democracy is engaged citizenship. So I can speak from experience. When I completed Leadership Overland Park, the thing that I really wanted to do is get involved in the city. I reached out to several people, raised my hands that I wanted to get involved and was pretty much told, eh, you know, there's nothing really going on right now, maybe try again later. So I ended up going on a state committee. And to me, that was fine. It kept me interested. It kept me involved until another opportunity came up. But there are good people out there that want to lend a hand. And I, to me, I think having that involvement within the process, getting them on committees, getting them on task forces, letting their voice heard through action. I think that's great. I mentioned earlier that, you know, sometimes when people come and give comments at, you know, city council, they make comments like, you know, $20 million, well, that's a rounding error in our $300 million budget. So, you know, you want to give everyone the opportunity to speak, but you also want to give people the opportunity to learn and participate. So when they provide some comments, they truly are value add. And by encouraging that participation, you get that buy-in, you get that education and evolve the city to the next level because you have an engaged citizenship that really helps take us to the next level.
Thank you, Sam. Sheila?
I absolutely support this. I was pleased to see that it was restored. I think it's important that residents feel like their voice can be heard. But I also think it's important for those same individuals to offer solutions for the city to consider, not just raising a concern or complaining. I feel like if I'm doing my job as a city councilman, to Stacy's point, I think most of them are very approachable. If, you know, if I'm doing my job, I should not see anyone from Ward Five appear in that public comment section unless they are supporting something that I'm advocating for them about. I shouldn't be surprised to hear that I'm about to make a decision on something that they are not fully educated on. So I think that is something that I will provide an extra layer of priority and focus on is that communication and two-way dialogue with the residents in Ward Five. I'd like to provide some regular town halls, some things that I can actively seek input from them, hear what they're concerned about, hear what's on their mind, dispel any rumors or misinformation, et cetera. So I absolutely support it.
Thank you, Sheila. How about you, Ty? Do you support designated time for public comment at council meetings?
Yeah, absolutely. And there's, there's so much more to it than that. So yes, I absolutely support a public comment period. A big part of why I'm running is to increase engagement, to increase participation amongst people in our city government. It is remarkably low how many people participate in our city government. And they don't participate, not because they don't want to, but because people aren't reaching out to them to try to bring them into the process. So I think that we need people who are going to reach out to, to, to bring more people into the process. And I just don't see that happening right now. I see people who are reaching out to those who are already participating. But it, it, it has to happen. It has to happen with more people coming in. So, so that's a big part of it. And beyond that, it's, yes, a public comment period is important. But we need leadership that understands that a public comment period doesn't solve things when we have real families who have real life needs, who can't make it to city council meetings, who can't sit through a two-hour city council meeting to understand what's going on in their city. Transparency isn't just having videos uploaded online to, to, to watch a two-hour city council meeting. We have to have leadership that's going to put in the work to educate our residents, put in the work to help make sure that they know what's going on in their cities so that they don't have to put in those two hours of watching a city council meeting. So, so that's why we need leadership that's going to do things like have regular newsletters to our, to our constituents, have regular town halls with our constituents to, to put in the work to educate and actually bring people into the process. It's why I've been putting out videos since I launched my campaign to educate people on topics from what our, what our city's budget does to topics as simple as what does city council actually do? Because people don't know that. And until we have resident, until we have leadership that's willing to put in that hard work to bring new people into the process, I think that it's not enough to just have a public comment period. We have to do so much more.
Thank you, Ty. Stacy?
Yeah, 100% love the public comment. When I met my husband, we were both young reporters at a radio station in Lawrence and our assignment was to go to every Lawrence city council meeting and report on it. And they had unlimited public comment in Lawrence. So we would be there till past midnight, almost every meeting, listening to everybody in Lawrence talk about everything. And it was, it was wonderful. And, and I just learned that that is how you hear the heartbeat of the city. So when I joined the council, I did everything I could. I joined during a pandemic year. That made it incredibly difficult. So I reached out to every email address, every contact that I had, got on social media, started talking about how I was voting and what I was doing and what I thought about things. If anybody reached out to me, I talked to them. I Zoom met with them. I did Zoom forums. When the issue regarding chip seal became a big issue and petitions started to be circulated, I wrote to everybody in Ward Four that signed a petition and offered to meet with them and sat under a park shelter and talked about chip seal for two hours. I mean, I've, I've met so many people out on the streets in front of their neighborhoods to talk about things that concern them. I think that is absolutely the heart and soul of what you do as a council person. It is absolutely how you understand what's important to city residents. And it helps inform your decisions. It's not the only thing that helps inform your decisions, of course. But it's important and I think transparency is just key to city government and to city staff. And that's a really big part of it.
Thank you, Stacy. Scott Mosher?
Well, I think public comments are, is the only way to go. The problem I have with public comments is that once the public has spoke, the vote is taken and the predetermined result is already driven and voted on. I've seen this in many cases where the public has spoke out. Toll 69 Highway was one. And what happened was when they said, hey, why don't we, as a city, let's vote on this, let's put it on the ballot. But that never had any merit with the council. They went ahead with their vote and of course, they voted for the toll. I agree with Ty here that it's not enough to have public comments. If you're not going to listen and you're not going to maybe even shelf the topic until at another time when it can be voted on because some of the public comments had a lot of merit. And I don't see, well, I do see too often that the city council isn't listening to those comments. I think that transparency is something that the council has to have. We have to make sure that we communicate with our constituency. We have to make sure that we do that in a timely, before our minds are made up and we can present all the facts to those that may not necessarily agree with our opinion. And I don't see that happening either. I've lived here for, you know, six years. I've never even talked to a councilman. I will tell you that one thing, when I, if I'm chosen to be on the council, that I will definitely, one weekend out of the month, for sure, on a Saturday, I'm going to make myself available to meet face to face with people and to hear their comments because it's that important to me. Total transparency, let's talk about it. And again, I've given my phone number to everybody and they can call me, which I've been getting a lot of calls.
Thank you, Scott. All right. So this will be our, our final question for the evening. And then we'll also do a, a close from each candidate for about a minute. I'll start with Sam on this particular question. So would you, as a council person, support an ordinance to ban conversion therapy for youth? We talked a little bit about the NDO that was signed a few years ago, but even broader scope, if you wanted to talk about inclusion measures to, to, to build a better city for business and for residents?
Yes, I would support such a measure. I, I believe and, and the ability to practice, you know, one's sexual orientation by their disposition or by choice and to force something on someone that isn't innate to them is wrong. And so I would be vehemently against any type of ordinance that would prevent someone from being who they are.
Thank you. And again, conversion therapy is the practice to attempt to change a sexual orientation and gender or, or gender identity for, for a minor. And I'll, I'll move to the next person to answer this question, which would be Ty Gardner.
Yeah. So the answer is yes, period, point blank, I would support an ordinance to ban conversion therapy for youth. So my reasoning for that, well, first off, let me, let me preface this. There are very few issues in government that we get to talk about that are black and white. There are very few issues in government that we get to talk about that are right versus wrong. Conversion therapy is wrong, end of story. And so, you know, my reasoning behind this is life is really hard. Especially, you know, think back to your life when you were 13, 14, 15 years old. I don't know how much, I don't know how much I'd have to be paid to go back to that point in my life and I had a relatively fine life. And so, so, so let's be real about why people are, you know, people are expressing their sexuality is because they want to feel like they belong. They want to feel, they, they want to feel that sense of belonging in their lives. And to deny somebody of that is just wrong, period, point blank. And I would absolutely support bans on conversion therapy. It's wrong.
Thank you, Ty. Stacy?
Yes, I would absolutely agree with that. I would also support anti-hate crime legislation or any similar measure. And I want to speak a little bit about this because this is something that is very important to me. I am a supporter of the Human Rights Campaign, Equality Kansas, Lambda Legal, The Trevor Project and other organizations. In my career, I work at CNA Insurance. We have an organization called Pride at CNA. I'm a member and because I'm a manager, I'm a member of a mentorship program where I am actually the mentee. And I'm mentored by somebody in the Pride group. And I completed that program recently and I was tasked with coming up with an initiative to spread diversity and inclusion around the company. And my initiative is to create a friends and family support group for LGBTQ plus coworkers and friends and family members. And so we're launching that next month. And then we are presenting, I'm a co-presenter to the Out and Equal Summit this fall about that mentorship program and that initiative that we're launching. This is just something that I feel incredibly strongly about in my career and equally strongly about in the city. And as I said earlier in an answer that I gave, I don't feel that it's something that we pay enough attention to in the city to really celebrate ourselves as a welcoming community and make more of an overt effort to strengthen our diversity efforts within Overland Park.
Thank you, Stacy. Scott?
Well, I, my battery's dropping on me here, so hopefully I'll get through this answer. I probably am unique to the council. I'm going to just lay it on the line. My oldest son from my first marriage has an alternative lifestyle, if that's how you want to put it. And, you know, I, I love him. I've cared for him. And I will tell you that at no time have I ever tried to change him. He is who he is. I supported him every step of the way. There were times when we struggled with this, but we did it together. And I think trying to change who some- And I think trying to change who somebody is, is just wrong. We need to embrace people. We need to do what we can to support them. And I think that the city, as it is reflected from the police department all the way to businesses, et cetera, that just doesn't come into play. We are who we are. And if you truly treat people the way our heavenly father would want us to treat other people, then this should not come into play. And I think that kind of therapy is wrong, outdated and has no part in the city at all.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Amy?
Yeah, I was raised in a home where bigotry and hate was never anything that was really displayed. So it wasn't really until four years ago when I started looking at some of the more ultra-conservative tendencies of politics and how that plays into societal issues. And when I witnessed some of the things that even occurred in our local school districts as far as campaigning and in the transgender movement and restrooms and all of these things, I was just embarrassed and hurt. And I was more embarrassed that I learned that I live with people around me that that, you know, act like that. So I would say over the, you know, that was really one of the most motivating factors that kind of disgusted me with some of the state politics and anything that I could ever do to support inclusion at the city level is 189,000% in the direction I would go. So in no way, shape or form would I ever support anything that would not allow someone to be who they need to be or whatever. So.
Thank you, Amy. And Sheila, did you give an answer on this question? I can't recall if I did.
No, not yet.
Okay, Sheila?
Yeah, I would not. This is something that I feel very strongly about. I would completely support a ban on conversion therapy. I agree with Scott. We have no place for this type of therapy in our community. A decision like this is a personal decision. It's not a decision that I feel any level of government should be allowed to decide for them or to make for them. I believe everybody has the right to be loved, to be true to themselves, to be included. And as a mom of two adult children now, I guess I can't call them children, but of two grown kids. You know, I think all of us as parents just want our kids to be happy and healthy and be a good person and a strong contributor to their community. And so I think you know, anything that we would do from a local government perspective to stand in that way would be completely wrong and out of line.
Thank you, Sheila. And Sheila will stick with you for a one-minute close for this event.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. You know, thanks for the opportunity to participate tonight and invite me. My name is Sheila Rodriguez. I'm running for city council in Ward Five. I'm a proven leader in our community that's passionate about preserving Overland Park as an exceptional place, not only to live, but raise a family. I've been improving the quality of life for our neighbors and problem solving for 25-plus years. I'm running for city council because I believe that elected officials should serve the people they represent. They should invest their time proactively seeking input, listening to those on both sides of an issue and consider how their decision might impact the people in that community. And I think I've mentioned this before that, you know, I didn't see that from most of our city councils. So instead of continuing to complain, I decided to become part of the solution and believe I can influence positive change. I look forward to bringing my professional experience and extensive involvement with our community to this position. I understand the value of hard work and the importance of public service. And I have consistently demonstrated a strong worth ethic in everything I do, whether I'm serving in a leadership role in the company or on our HOA Board of Directors or PTO Committee Chairman. If it's worth doing, it's worth doing right. So I encourage everyone to vote. Your vote is your voice. And to learn more about me and my vision for our beautiful city, please visit sheilaforop.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Yep. Ty Gardner?
All right. Well, thank you to all the groups who are hosting this event. Thank you to all the members of those groups taking time out of your night to help make sure people are informed. And thanks to our residents who are taking time out of your night to make sure that you're making an informed decision in this upcoming election. And my closing statement is that if you are putting in the time to make sure you're making an informed decision, you need leadership that's going to meet you halfway. And leadership that's going to do that all the time, not just when we're asking for your votes. We should expect leaders who are going to work hard to get in front of our residents and not make our residents work hard to get in front of them. We've been out knocking doors since March and I've had so many people tell me that I'm the first city candidate to knock their door and ask their opinion. We need to expect more than that. We're the second biggest city in Kansas. We should expect leadership that puts out newsletters, that holds regular town halls to make sure that you don't have to sit through those two-hour city council meetings if you don't want to. So on August 3rd, I hope you'll send the message that we do expect more. I hope you'll vote for me to, as somebody who's committed to raising those expectations. To learn more about my campaign, you can go to www.tiforop.com or also call or text me. My cell phone number is 785-418-1165. Thank you all.
Stacy?
Yes, thank you. And thank you so much for hosting us this evening. I truly enjoyed it and discussing these important issues. So a year ago, I applied to fill the vacancy on the city council for Ward Four because I thought that I had something to give back to the city that had given so much to me and my family. I knew that I would work hard, that I would do the research, that I would make the best decisions I could for the city and that I would explain my reasoning for doing that. And I'm proud of the work that I've done over the past years. I think that my qualifications, my experience and my background give me a really good view of where we have been as a city and what a wonderful city we have. But as the mom of two kids that are getting ready to graduate college and come into this world, I can also see what this city needs to be for them. How we need to grow, the vibrant city that we need to be for the future, all of the possibility that we have. What we need to do to become a welcoming and diverse community for people of all ages, of all income levels, of all the demographics that we have within the city. There is so much that we can do together to build on our strengths. I really hope that as you look at this election and look at these candidates, that you look at qualifications and background, but you also look at the hope and the positivity and the attitude for the future and look at who has the right vision for the future of Overland Park. I would really appreciate the opportunity to represent Ward Four for the next four years. It's been my privilege to do so for the last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Scott?
Well, the reason that I started to run and thank you, by the way, for hosting this forum. And thank you, Todd and Stacy and all the folks from Ward Five for being here tonight. But I think that what we need for the future is inclusion. We need to listen to those that put us in there into the council. My background, I was a reserve police officer for 14 years, working the streets in North Las Vegas and Henderson, Nevada. I have a good understanding of police work. I have a good understanding of serving the public. And I have a great understanding of managing budgets, profit and loss statements. I did that for a total of almost 40 years with two different companies. So when it comes to the city of Overland Park, my roots are here. My family's here, they're going to stay here and I'm going to stay here. And I have to tell you that I was neglectful before my son died. And my son asked me to run and to be honest with you, you know, I was hesitant. But the more I got involved, the more that I saw that I thought I could make a difference and I think I can. And my experience and my involvement in the community, since I've gotten involved, just drives me even further. This will be my full-time job. And I will give Overland Park everything that my son has given, which is everything. And I appreciate everybody here. I appreciate the dialogue. I appreciate the ideas and thank you for putting this on.
Thank you, Scott. Amy?
Yeah, I'm going to call out each of you individually and thank you, the Mainstream Coalition, the League of Women Voters, Advocacy and Awareness Group, the LGBT Chamber and ACLU of Kansas. And I've done a little research on all of those. And as I said in my opening statement, you know, this forum excited me the most because as a social worker, that's what we do. We're a community of resources, of individuals, of organizations. And I feel that, you know, my background as a social worker is something that the city of Overland Park, as far as the council doesn't have. We are blessed to have a couple of great ladies that are representing the social work profession on the county commission. And I'd like to be that person that does that for the city of Overland Park. And I am not immune to the fact that that's going to take a lot of help from the experts and all of the organizations that are here tonight, but but many others. So I'd love to be that advocate and represent the people of Ward Five, but also represent the city as a whole.
Thank you, Amy.
For having me.
Rounding out with Sam?
All right. Thank you so much. There's a real interesting dynamic to Overland Park. You read the headlines and you see that we're one of the top five cities in the entire US. You also read different headlines and you read how tragically broken the city is. It's so interesting seeing the varying opinions and lots of times it's not just a yes or a no or, you know, one or the other. The opinions are formed by multiple perspectives and experiences. And I think one of the things that I really appreciate is the ability to simplify the complex. At work, when there's something that is really hard to figure out, it often gets dumped on my plate because that's something that I tend to do well. I like to listen to people. I like to understand an issue. I like to break it down in a way that's easy to understand. Residents are busy. They don't have time. And I like to offer that service to them where I can break down these complex issues, have intelligent discussions, listen with them and make those residents' voices heard to make Overland Park a better place. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Sam. And thank you all for being here tonight. And thank you for giving me an opportunity to moderate. It's been super interesting hearing your perspectives. And again, we thank you for being here. I'll kick it back over to Michael.
All right. Thank you so much, Leon, for moderating tonight. And thank you to the candidates for taking the time to share your perspectives and to the organizations who partnered tonight to make this forum possible. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, ACLU of Kansas, Advocacy Awareness Group of Johnson County, the Mid-America LGBT Chamber of Commerce and of course, Mainstream Coalition. Both the League and Mainstream will post a recording of this forum on our Facebook and YouTube pages, so please share them with your network of voters. Remember, advanced voting by mail began yesterday. Advanced voting in person begins on July 24th. July 27th at 5:00 PM is the last day to request your advanced ballot for the August 3rd primary. Before you vote, please visit vote411.org or ksballet.org to read up on candidates' positions, find your polling or drop-off locations and make a plan to vote. Thank you again for joining us and have a wonderful evening.